Call meeting in order.
Kelly?
Here.
Coffee?
Here.
McKenley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
What's your take?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any public comments tonight. Section 1 is a consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Call it.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKenley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Section 2 is unfinished business. If we have anything we're seeing...
No, we do not.
Move on to Section 3, new business ordinance resolutions for initial consideration.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-14, approval of her today's request to close the 300 block south of Main on October 13th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion.
What's the deal on this?
We're doing a fundraiser just on the 300 block. It'll be a battle of bands and a cook-off chili, ribs, chicken, I believe. So it's a just...
Do you want to have the bars incorporated in it in some way?
We are not doing that ourselves. If they choose to, that's up to them. We're not involved in anything at the bars. We're just doing the out-front music. We're not bringing in a beer truck. We're not setting all that up, not participating in that.
Since we gave you money for this, for the last one, for the 2018 one, we've never really got to report from pretty much...
I asked for it. I told her she would have to have it. It was before they came back to request money for next year.
I was working on it this weekend. It's pretty much in order, just that last weekend, things come in so crazy, as Aaron knows, sorting through those numbers and getting an accurate count of what was where.
I checked with the school district. The homecoming is a week before, so it won't interfere with that.
So what about liquor on the streets? What if people try to scavenge bars with liquor in their hands since the 300 block is closed? What, I mean...
You'll have to have the police enforce it.
All day? Are you talking about all day?
Yeah, and actually, we probably need to consider closing it Friday, just for setup purposes.
What was all day? What kind of story?
Probably, I think the plan was about 1:00, it would go into the evening.
Well, it's like, how are you guys going to designate from, you know, if you keep 100, 200 block open to water, how are you going to like stop the traffic from...
The typical barricades and fence that we normally have.
Still have like Main Street open, except for just that side.
Yes, it would be just a 300 block, cross-traffic, still be open. And I cannot say for sure that the bars will not come in and ask, but we're not participating in that. That's up to their discretion if they want to do that, ask for it. That's entirely up to them, so.
Anything else?
Yeah, the bars involvement concerns me because surely they'll want to be involved.
Quite possible.
And you're going to have to figure out how to incorporate them into your event.
Yes.
Into your event.
If they, if they do do that, we will use the armbands, just like we do for Heritage Days. So anybody outside drinking would have to have an armband to show that they've 21 and older, and it will have according to any ordinance or the ordinance that's out there, so.
I would almost rather see the bars be involved in it.
It's entirely up to them on this. We're talking to them, but it's all on them. We're not participating at all. We're not providing a beer truck. We're not providing ice. It's just whether they want to take on that extra themselves.
They're not getting you to finish the beer money right now?
No, no.
It seems to look great to me.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think people were pretty upset about the street being closed just one time. I mean, I had to deal with a lot of backlash for that, so I don't know how everybody in town is going to feel about closing it twice for the same event, essentially. I mean, you're kind of doing the same thing that you do at Heritage Days. And if you have to close it down Friday, I mean, that is affecting everybody's business down there on that end, which is a lot, you know, quite a bit of business. The beauty shop is very busy on Fridays and, I don't know, it just, it doesn't seem like a tenement for me.
The intent here is a fundraiser to offset costs so that it lightens the load all the way across in general. So that's, that's the intent here. And we do have other fundraisers planned. We will be going to U of I, Working Assembly Hall, the stadium. We've been invited to Apple and Pork. So those are all on the agenda along. So we're trying, we're trying to offset some of those other costs, so.
I can see the difference here is that this is only the 300 block, so that's a much smaller portion of what Heritage Day is.
There's a lot of businesses on the 300 block that are open on Friday. There's an insurance company, there's two bars, there's a bank, there's a hair place, there's a water business. I mean, we're all, you know, busy on Fridays, so to have this little, you know, notice on something that seems like a pretty... And I mean, the streets were like, you know, the trash situation, if you did this, you know, how would you handle that? Getting the trash picked up and just cleaning the area, because it was not exactly like great after Heritage Days. There was a lot of trash.
Yeah, and we spent Sunday sweeping, cleaning, and walking around. It was pretty excessively hot that day, and we walked up and down Main Street multiple times on Sunday. So it would be the same as we always do. We'd have the trash collection, we'd be sweeping, and we're talking a much smaller area.
Can you get a commitment on the bars before we, can you carry this over to the next meeting and get a commitment on the bars, either gay or nay, before we approve it?
We can try.
We're talking to the police chief too, if you want.
Yeah.
I just, I see, I see, Will Miller's right, it's just a little premature. I don't say disorder, I say premature, but alcohol is an integral part of any cook-off. If they want to be involved, and I think we need to get that worked out before we say you have to close the street.
Because you're going to do all that, there's going to be an issue with it out there.
Well, and that was a follow-up question. Is there a reason, let's say you've set, you know, both bars up there on their own, is there a reason you picked that block, like why you couldn't do it around its heart?
So the bars could take advantage of it if they wanted to, yeah. Attendance would be better if they did, as Scott said, it's kind of an integral part of a cook-off and, so, which would then be a bigger draw for us.
The other one, it seems like a fine idea.
Again? Go ahead.
So can I make a motion and move it to the next meeting for a vote?
You move table?
Table.
Move table?
I'll second that.
Call it.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKenley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Make a motion for approval of the engineering services with Farrar, Graham, and Cool Renovations.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
This is really a packet. Couple things, just as a reminder. One, full renovation was at the top of one of your strategic plan goals. The other is the Illinois Department of Public Health requires that when you're doing this, to deal with certified engineers or contractors. Farrah Graham and Andrew Kaiser are certified through IDPH. They were fabulous in coming out. I talked to the Talonormals Park, he's an aquatic director, and he recommended Andrew Kaiser with Farrah Graham. And so he came out, he was out there immediately, helped us deal with that whole pool wall on the deep end we had earlier this year. He's just been very, you know, accessible, very helpful. Farrah Graham was actually the second on my choice when we were looking for a new engineer, so they come highly recommended. Long story short, I went ahead because of the timeliness to go ahead and start drawing up preliminary plans, but told him he would be paid for work to date if, you know, you didn't want to proceed. His fee is $60,000. That seems high, but when you look at typically a design phase, phase engineering is usually 10% to 20%. And we were looking at half a million to $600,000, so that's right about 10%. And that's, you didn't write not to exceed, but it may not cost that much. You know, that's a time, almost a time of material, it's just hours of the staff, is it worth it? Depends on how much we want to change it and anything else that goes on, so. Because this is above the $25,000, bringing it to you.
So I guess I have a question. The existing pool isn't going to be torn out, correct?
Not, no. No, we have to dig it all out to put in a new filter system. So the baby pool and the median pool can remain, but it will look like a checkerboard because we have to dig it all out for the new filters and drains.
Okay.
So what I, I asked the four concept, which is what you have in front of them, they said, "Look, if you're going to dig this out, what would it look like to take that pit, so to speak, once you have to take all the floor out, you know, to make a zero entry? And how would that look?" And so he went and drew that up so we could see that it's doable, there's room, there's, you know, so where the baby pool is now, you would have more room for tables or chairs with sun shade and room to place lounge chairs around the zero entry portion. So that's where that came from. You don't have to do that. Again, we can keep the two pools. Jill Moke, the current manager, she was happy with this. She said, "As long as I have the three and a half feet deep area for her lessons," which she looked at that, she thought that that was acceptable. So either way, we have to tear out the pool deck, we have to tear out the floors of the both pools to put in a new filter system, so we're either going to put it back and make it look like a checkerboard, you know, or maybe do something different.
So this, this is just the two small pools?
Yes. The deep end, what they're talking about doing, we haven't even got that far. I mean, all we've talked about doing with the L-shaped pool, the large pool, is diamond bright coating. It's like, it's not quite paint, it's not, doesn't have as much upkeep as paint. A lot of pools use it, it's that like bright white, and it's kind of gritty and, you know... And then a possible slide. Other than that, not much, except for some painting and a couple of lifeguard chairs. So the main pool wouldn't really have any changes, except connection to the new filter system.
Look, so the wall in the new pool is fixed?
Yes, I mean, you're going to have to, when they go to reline it or paint it, you're going to have to fix the entire thing, but it's not going to be like a whole new.
Oh, okay.
So it's just because these two pools were smaller and will be largely destroyed again, you know, because they're not very big, and you've got to take all that out, I just threw out the concept, hey, what if we, you know, look at this?
I was just looking at the drawing. It shows the existing pool in there, it just looks like, you know, it's another six foot wider.
They didn't go as far south, and they didn't go as far north, but...
The zero entry, that's, that's no water, you just...
Right, you just walk in. There's water, but it's like being at the beach, you know, you just walk in, a lot of pools are going to that, and having a couple potential splash features instead of the baby pool.
After all the building, they need to do, alter the building for everything's existing that now, filter system that now.
Are we going to have to do what?
Alter the building.
Alter the building, yes, we will be altering the building. It will require a little bit, they think they can get it in an existing filter room, but what's beautiful is Jill will not have to get down on the pit anymore, so just push a button. It's much safer, much cleaner, we're going to have a new roof, and then we have to make the, getting around that wall from like the pool to the locker rooms, it is not a load-bearing wall, so we'll be able to take like a column of blocks out and make it AV accessible. And we'll be redoing the floor. But we're talking about just living at concrete, so we'll keep painting it.
Concrete throughout, but we'll be redone on the whole thing.
Oh, and pool deck, that's, I call it pool deck. It's all the concrete that's out there will be redone.
And chlorine, do we use chlorine gas with the chlorine?
That's a good question. I don't know. I didn't really know.
It's not saltwater, so they don't use the chlorine?
No, it's not, it's not saltwater. We asked about that, and it says it's terrible, terribly corrosive. But yeah, I talked to them about everything because I thought, we're going to spend the money once another, and I know this sounds flippant, but what's another $20,000 to fix whatever it is, like the roof or, you know? So we looked at everything, top to bottom, using Jill's input and Andy and... So they are preparing plans for you, and then you can obviously decide, no, we don't want the zero entry, we want to keep the two, you know? Those are the decisions you make when he brings the concept. This is design and then being the, you know, working with getting the permit and everything. It's for his services to take us from agency.
This is, this only includes the slide, does this include like water toys or...
No, it includes two. Well, we haven't decided that. Nothing's been decided on what we're doing with the pool. What we're talking about tonight is having Farrah Graham design something for us. Right. He's already started, and what he's working on right now is the filter system and the pool deck and the large pool line, you know, those things that we're going to have to do regardless. Right. Then he'll have some concepts for you to decide. Do you want a slide? Do you want, you know, bubbly features? We have talked about with the zero entry, a couple of bubbly features or fountain type things. He doesn't recommend mushrooms because the columns have to constantly be painted, but they've come up with a new flower feature. It looks like a flower, but it's a pole, and it drips down, you know, like a fountain. But, you know, those are all decisions for you to make. So right now, this is just a, you know, continue using Farrah Graham. And we can start demolition right after, like, Dave, do you not need the permit for that? So that we can start as soon as the weather breaks in the spring.
Do you have anything else?
So we start, when the weather breaks in the spring, the pool will be open?
Where, that's the goal, was to be open.
On time?
Mm-hmm. That's why we want to do demolition this fall.
Has anybody considered parking, are we going to need to change parking around at all?
No, it hasn't been discussed. It has been discussed, the drainage issue out there, that we're going to, if there's enough money after we fixed that sewer truck line earlier this year, there seems to be money available. We want to get that televised, we think it's full of roots down in there, so if we can get that cleaned out, we think it's going to drain better, but we haven't talked about parking.
Or on the west side of the pool?
Yeah, right there, yeah, well, no, east side, along John Street.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Where it always lives.
Parking, I don't know, I guess that's a, would be a good problem to have, but we haven't discussed it.
See, the parks hold on different, one is extremely different. Parking's always been an issue up there, so if you don't leave a parking in the beginning, it's...
Literally, it's gotten better though, like if they have like anything major where there's going to be a lot of vehicles, they put signs up that says like, you can't park here.
I think the director won't realize.
Right, like then they don't have them parked at there on days when the pool's open, so they work well with the pools.
We do not have white fire pools. Oh, guys, teenagers love it, but it was really designed for Jill because she had to keep coming over here to order things. I mean, it was kind of a mess, so...
Do they have a credit card machine yet?
Not yet. I'm going to work on it.
Very fortunately, we have a good pool manager, she's my actual...
I know she's very happy with some of the things we've done all the way, so I think she's excited about this, whether we do zero entry or not, just to kind of get things improved and...
Right.
Any discussion? Call it.
McKenley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
What's your take?
Make a motion to approve the waive the bid process to purchase the Mini Co. and trailer.
Discussion.
Why are we waiving it?
Okay, Fred worked six weeks. The state doesn't even offer a bid for this piece of equipment, so he spent a lot of time calling around, trying to find what was, you know, served their needs, and was only able to find these two, and so we thought, well, what's the purpose of, you know, bidding it out if we don't even, the state can't even have bid on it? So that's why I included what he was able to find and recommending as sole source that these are the only two that he could find that, you know...
If you can't find anybody else, why go through the process of, like, expect everything else, since we should be...
Essential on my ag is local and came in under budget. That's me.
My question would be, you know, is, I understand tobacco's big, but this piece of equipment's not that much smaller than the backhoe.
Well, I realized that I probably should have had all of them here, all three utilities so that they would use it so much more for these little projects, and then it frees up the backhoe for others.
Okay.
It also reduces wear and tear on the backhoe. So that was their thought process, and it wasn't just like one person. All of them were just, you know, really excited to have it. To me, I didn't feel like it was about, ooh, a new toy. It was about, we could use it here, and we could use it there, and we, you know...
Well, sometimes I need two pieces of equipment at the same job.
True.
You know, if they, they get in hole with the backhoe and that kind of stuff.
They had times where they haven't been able to do something because the backhoe was broken.
Right.
You know, and again, it reduces wear and tear on the backhoe.
Do we have, do we have one person that runs the backhoe, or is everybody good at running the backhoe?
They can all run it pretty much, but I think Dave just likes it, so they've kind of chosen their positions per se. That doesn't mean that others can't get in there and do it, it's just, oh, Dave always drives it, you know? It doesn't mean somebody else can't. I know Fred can drive it, I think Calvin can drive it, and Trevor just got his CD out, so, you know, I think it's just, they get set in their ways about who does what.
So more than one person can use this, what department's going to end up with it?
I don't know where they'll start. They may start with the street garage, but it's mostly for water and sewer. Electric felt that it was possible, because I asked them before I budgeted for it, that, you know, is it practical to charge electrical portion of it? And they said, "Yeah, there may be times where they need it." But I think storage-wise, we'll apply to store it at the street garage, but I think it's mostly going to be used for water and sewer.
Okay. But I guess I was wondering, you alluded to it, if all departments can share a portion of the cost and intended likewise to have access to it.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes.
On the use of...
I think they're really good about sharing equipment. I think, I haven't heard of any real issues.
On the use of, want to take care of it?
Well, that was a big thing about the trailer, because this way, they get it to and from without running around the streets and, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a piece of equipment that can be driven around.
No, really.
But that's why taking care of it goes back to who's driving it, because I know the guy that runs our machines not always the best at it.
I can't speak to that, but I haven't heard any complaints, but that doesn't mean...
We don't talk about that.
So did the budget, is it coming out of streets?
Four.
Is it all four?
Oh, streets, water, sewer.
The expense was completely lost.
Okay, right.
It looked like they got the one with the cab on it.
Yes, yeah. Actually, Dave was, you know, because he's one of the many drivers, he's like, "I don't care," you know? He wasn't like, "Oh, I've got to be in air conditioning." They, they liked it because it protects him, but, you know...
Right.
Price difference wasn't going to steal money, so... Any other discussion on this? Yeah? No?
Good.
Call it.
Testory?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKenley?
Yes.
Coffee?
Unmolested motion to discuss the TIF district.
No, no, we don't. I was wondering, okay. I believe you've worked with him before. Keith Moran is here with his company, and just so you know what we're looking at before I toss it to him, I reached out to him because our TIF 2 is going to expire soon, and I want as many tools in our toolbox as we can get for economic development. And in Main Street, as well as some of the newer areas that are looking to develop, I'm strapped right now. All I have is business districts to offer, and there's not much money in there, at least right now. So I reached out to Keith and went ahead and said, "Why don't you go ahead and do the eligibility study? Because we're, you know, 99% sure it'll be eligible, because it was before. It's almost just a revamp of the old TIF 1. But I'll let him address that." So he's come to kind of review what he's found, and then we can discuss, you know, whether you want to take the steps to go further. Do we want to do a plan? Do we want to adopt this? We'd like to get it done by the end of 18. We have some new development coming that would go into this area that could either receive TIF funds or at least create instant increment to help other areas within that TIF. It will also, on the next item, we're going to talk about it will help fund the I-70 development, so. So Keith?
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. And I got some maps just to give you guys, just from a reference standpoint. We've got our TIF district map, I appreciate it, but it is good to see you guys again. Again, Keith Moran, Moran Economic Development, worked with you on the setup of your business districts, and had done some preliminary work regarding a new TIF, that being TIF 3. And so just happy to be back, and happy to be talking to you guys again, and hopefully give you guys a hand. I do have some extra maps if you guys need those, but basically, like Sue said, we have our existing TIF. That area is indicated in red. Someone may have got a different color map.
Two different maps.
Yeah, they're going to be the same, just one's just a different color. Here, let me take it, not to be confused. Yellow would be, yellow on your map is TIF's, yeah, there you go. Sorry, I don't know if I put enough enough.
We can just maybe one.
I have some older ones. It's the same, they're the same map, just different colors. Basically, we've got a red, we've got our red area. That's your TIF number two. That was done back in 1999, due to expire 2022. Might as well probably come in '23. It generates probably $300 and something thousand dollars a year, but you guys got some obligations, so you don't see all that money, although at some point, that money will open up to you guys. And so that one was primarily done for residential purposes and service purposes, and you still got some public infrastructure improvements to be done in that neighborhood. And so, but what you don't have is you don't have a commercial industrial TIF or a retail-oriented TIF. You've had in the past, and a lot of your neighbors do, actually. A lot of neighbors are using the TIF program to stimulate commercial and industrial revitalization. And so that's kind of where the genesis was long ago when I first got involved, and why I'm back is how can we maybe, what kind of tool can we use to help, to help stimulate that? We have gotten phone calls on grocery, grocery stores before, and all you have is business district funds, which, I mean, is something. It's not nothing, but the TIF generally is used to help attract the grocery folks. A TIF's also used often to help do, say, a facade improvement program, which I think would be pretty helpful here downtown, where you can get, a bunch of business owners can get together and make improvements to their outsides or their facades, and I think that's something that you guys have had in years past. You could then bring that program back and hopefully do some beautification efforts down, downtown. We certainly have some business retention aspects too, you know, that's kind of where I'm looking at, more of our northern end, take care of some of our existing agricultural folks and light industry folks that have been here for a while, help them expand through the use of TIF, which they would never be able to, so business district doesn't even impact them because they're not retail sales at all, and so the TIF could be used to help keep folks here. We've got your school district in there as well, we've got your pool in there. Actually, there could be monies along the way to help fund some of those types of capital expenditures there. Then we've got sort of your commercial, your commercial growth area, I would say, in the southern portion, kind of where our Casey's is now, where that area, you can use TIF funds to help further attract new folks to this area. And it certainly, I know, was a big reason we got here the first time, was development around I-74 and extending utilities over there, because without utilities, it's not very likely you're going to get the kind of folks or users that you'd want to come back. or users that you'd want to come there, there. And so that was sort of the thinking long ago and today as to how that area came about, what you might be able to do with it. Certainly, we've got not only those, and just to touch on that finally, but obviously we've got the lack of utility issues here at the interchange, but we've certainly got a bunch of utility issues in, throughout our potential TIF district area as well that could be solved using TIF funds there. The nice thing is when two TIFs are contiguous to one another, it's just a strategy, I'm not saying it's something that you will do, but a strategy could be, you can use monies from one TIF and transfer it into another, which, and she's referenced that already, but I just thought I'd bring that up as a strategy to help really jumpstart your TIF district area and that's, that would be a nice advantage there. And so that was, those are just some general comments before I kind of got into more the TIF eligibility, because we can't just draw a circle around our, our community and say, hey, here's our TIF. The area has to qualify under the Illinois TIF Act. And that's one of the things we wanted to look at, which I'm primarily here to talk about tonight, is how the area qualifies, if in fact you chose to do a TIF. And that's not at all what we're saying. There's a lot of more discussion. I think we wouldn't stray too far from this area, but I think we'd have definitely some more discussion on, on the matter, but I'll just kind of take you through that. There's about 314 total parcels in the TIF, 264 of which would be classified as developed. On those 264, there's 430 structures and 391 or 90% of them are over the age of 35. What that means is we have to find three qualifying factors, three factors need to exist within our area in order for us to qualify as TIF. In the end, we have 10 exists, six to a qualifying extent. And what those structures, what those issues are, are, we've got issues of obsolescence where, sorry, I'm going to look at this. Issues of obsolescence, basically both functional and economic obsolescence. We've got a lot of EAV loss here. And in fact, at one point, the area was worth probably $3 million more than it is today. And so we've got the case of economic obsolescence. Obviously, we have some deteriorating factors as well. This is obviously an older portion of town that we're, we've, we would focus our TIF district on. And so we've got considerable structural deterioration, which isn't uncommon in areas with this kind of history. We also have considerable surface deterioration. What we're talking about are issues with our sidewalks, our parking lots, driveways, streets, those types of things that TIF can typically help repair and remediate. Obviously, utility issues, which isn't, which also isn't uncommon in, in this area focus, is it's obviously older. We've got water systems dating back to the 1950s. We've got sanitary sewer system issues in the area. I'm sorry, I'm on page, I'm kind of on page nine is where we're kind of talking a little bit about it. We've got issues with our water treatment plant, water tower, our sewer system suffers from some infiltration. You guys will eventually have to make some additional improvements to your sanitary sewer treatment plant. Also probably need to do something stormwater wise in this, in varying parts of this area as well. And that's not to say, we also have, obviously, with you guys, I got typo, I got farmer city, light and power, we've got issues in, from a utility perspective that TIF could help improve as well. Issues of deleterious land use and layout. Basically, those are land use relationships that occur when the function of one land use negatively impacts the land, adjacent land uses. That's not uncommon in this area. We've got a lot of mixed, we have residential uses next to a light industrial uses, not uncommon for a town of this kind of history, but that is, that does allow the area to qualify. About almost 60% of the area suffers from this. 71% of the area suffers from a lack of community planning, meaning, hey, if we, if we were to build Farmer City brand new, would it be mapped and look the same? I think obviously it would not. We would kind of, we would segregate certain areas and plan a little bit better than how it's been planned over the more than 100.
How many years do you guys, 1837?
I don't know.
Yeah, exactly. Lastly, what we got are stagnant declining property values. This is sort of looked at a little different from earlier. Basically, what we're looking at is we're taking this area and saying, okay, how do we compare to the rest of the city? How are we growing on an annual basis? For three of the past five years, we've not been performing as well as areas outside of this area. In particular, we had a year where we grew by .31%, .31%. The rest of the city grew by almost 40. Following year, we declined by 10, by just shy of 10, while the rest of our area increased by seven, almost 7.44%. And then there was another year where we grew at a more negative rate. But my point is, the key to it is that we're focused on the right area for TIF. If you guys were looking for a place that needed some, that could use some folks to invest in that area to make improvements, this is the area of focus when you're looking at it. And it kind of makes sense on a just general conversational standpoint, it's our older downtown area, older business area, but it does even statistically as well, it sort of shows, shows that. And so we also have undeveloped areas in our TIF as well, which include, and I'll just quickly, diversity of ownership, got a lot of different folks owning different property, which allows it to qualify, obsolete plating, deterioration of structures, which are similar to what I've kind of already referenced. But we also have flooding issues, which you guys have dealt with over the past, primarily in our southern sort of areas here as mapped, which was after page 12. We also have, the area consists of unused rail yards, rail tracks or railroad. So the area very clearly qualifies more, more ordinarily, honestly, than it might just be, especially because of the flooding and the rail situation. And so that's, that's sort of the issue. Statutory wise, if you wanted, you guys, the area would qualify and you guys could in fact create a redevelopment plan. And that redevelopment plan is really all about, okay, what are we going to do to remediate these issues? And, and so, and that goes back to, hey, we've got deterioration downtown in some of our buildings, let's, let's put in our plan the need for, to do a facade improvement program. We've got, do you have a question?
Yeah. Why wasn't the golf course moved into the TIF district?
Why wasn't, was it not?
And property north of it?
I never knew it to need to be a focus. Typically, golf courses aren't allowed to be in TIFs, but you can put them in if.
It's a private golf course, so I mean, I don't think it would, you wouldn't want to.
Well, you talk about the drainage problem, that's part of the drainage that goes through there.
There's different schools of thought, if we could talk to your attorney about it, there are some, it says, some folks say you can't, you can't place a golf course in a TIF district at all. Others say you can, although it's hard to suggest that it's, there's blighted areas. But what you couldn't do is you couldn't use any TIF money for, in any way, shape or form for recreational purposes. So you get a couple of schools of thought. And I think at this point, when we were looking at it, it was primarily, I mean, you kind of, we could look at it.
I was asking a question because you showed it on the one map here about the, about the drainage, the blue on the page after page 12. So, and that's incorporated into the golf courses, I just wanted.
Yeah. So.
That's probably just because that ditch around for the golf course though.
Well, yeah, that's why. I'm just curious.
We could, we could look at it. The reason, I mean, the reason being is that we didn't think that the TIF would, we've got a lot of potential.
Look at it.
Resolutions. I can't.
Well, I think it's already qualified.
Yeah.
So if we were, we could add it.
Could qualify it more.
Yeah, well, I mean, add it to the plan and ordinance is, if that's what you want, you know, because it's already qualified and this isn't going to hurt it if you wanted to add it in.
And this way you could then, it's provided, like you said, I talked to your attorney a little bit more about what they thought there, but I don't, it would be, it looks pretty simple to throw in, like parcelize and whatnot.
Does it benefit the golf course to be thrown in?
No.
I, it, really, are you guys going to use public monies to address the stormwater issues there?
That would be the only thing is the property to the north and I wouldn't see us developing that, I mean, maybe like you said, extending utilities through it or addressing stormwater management, but other than that, I don't see using money anywhere there.
Right.
Just a question.
No, that's, no, please.
It would be.
What about, I mean, obviously, calling on our most few utilities down the interstate, but I wondered if there'd be any, any difference around utilities across that way.
Well, there's been talk about that. It was on the north side of the golf course there and I was saying, I want to call the snow property here, that run across, that has been a thought somewhat in the past too.
And I guess that was a question, concern I had is, you know, if we ran the utilities there, it was in there, could be used for that, correct?
Yes.
Otherwise, it would not.
All right.
Well, I couldn't think if it's connected, you know, you could stretch it, but there is concern, which I was going to discuss on the next topic, is where the existing water sewers at the end of Richardson?
Okay.
That's the closest that we talked about, you know, extending there just north of the golf course, but then you have to run it all the way back down, you know what I mean? When you have water sewer already there at the interchange.
See, yeah, it's just, I think today is kind of about, A, we can certainly look at that and, as well as other parcels, for that matter. I mean, I don't, I don't think that we necessarily nailed it, but yeah, there's going to be other conversations that could cause us to include parcels into this, which aren't, isn't going to greatly affect eligibility one way or another, or delete some parcels if, if they weren't going to benefit from the TIF either. And so it's really kind of a matter of how you guys want to move forward. And I'm not saying I need an answer or not tonight. It is more, it is in your best interest to, to have this done by year's end, but that's, that's not an absolute either, it's, that would be fine as well.
I think that would be ideal. That is one of the reasons why I asked them to go ahead and find if it's eligible, is to try to get your appetite for doing this and if there is one, to start proceeding right away to try to get this done by the end of the year so that we can capture that increment.
We've talked about this TIF before. We knew, I think, a year ago or more, that we were going to have to do this type of TIF. There was a lot, there was, due to the previous issues, there was a lot of feedback on it, but it's not something I think we can continue to put off just because of feedback.
Well, I do think that we have some new policies, we have some new understandings, some procedures. No matter how things, you know, will go moving forward, I think everybody's learned a lot. And I see it as a positive because every time I get somebody that calls my office that's looking to develop in town, expand, develop, whatever it is, I only have so much I can offer them. And TIF is a huge tool to use because of the amount of money that it brings with it. And it doesn't always have to be TIF. It does, you don't have to have all of it in the bank, you know, you can borrow against it and do all kinds of things that will bring development to town.
It's a whole different world than what it was in 1990 about the TIF and everything. It's a whole different world about, about the TIF when it was in 1990. Things have really improved upon so much over the years. It didn't really work for us the first time out, you know, not so much other than downtown here, or towards the end of it all. We were hoping at the time that we created the TIF back in 1990, that it would, on the, on the other side of the interstate, that we would, somebody would come along. There was some interest at the time, once we put that in effect and everything.
I think there's going to be a leading draw is to use it for the commercial corridor, but then utilize that, those improvements for your core, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's facade improvements, whatever it is that, you know, you kind of.
It could have been a stumbling block or somebody was looking at this and saying, well, they haven't got the utilities on the other side of the interstate. We didn't have, we didn't have people in place to get that over the interstate and it's time along and got worse and said you weren't going to have, that wasn't going to happen. But now, since we do have somebody in place that is, knows what they're doing and everything, I'm willing to look, going to do this if we qualify.
Just in terms of like next steps and what kinds of things that go into the, the whole process, we'd want to shore up our area, but we'd want to probably do that sooner rather than later, if you wanted to proceed. And from there, what we do is we put together a full schedule. That schedule would incorporate redevelopment plan, meaning, okay, what do we want to accomplish with this TIF? We'd help you with that, but we'd want obviously your feedback. And a lot of, a lot of the things I think I kind of talked about could be incorporated and take your, your thoughts. We'd have what's called a joint review board meeting and, and a joint review board consists of our taxing districts. And so we'd engage the taxing districts and let them know, A, how the area qualifies and B, what we want to do to alleviate those qualifications. And so that's, that's always an important portion of the project. We also have a public hearing, which involves a mailing that we do also, we mail everybody that's going to be in the TIF and everybody 750 foot from the TIF to let them know, hey, this is, again, how the area qualifies and B, this is what we hope to accomplish. So it does get fairly public if you guys want to proceed, but it's something that we could do by year's end if we started soon enough. Some of it's controlled by statute and can't do this without 45 days and yada yada, that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I think we need to forward it as well.
Okay. What's kind of what I wanted to hear was if there was a consensus, so if we're too far down the road. So I think Keith and I can get together and Joe and get some next steps and get through that.
Which is also good too, is the schools involved in this, which I think is.
Yes, I've been talking to the school superintendent and I'm sure that we can come to some of the benefits of both of us, so.
Okay.
Anything else on that topic?
I don't.
Okay.
All we have left is I-74 utility extension discussion.
Okay. So again, this is one of your top strategic planning goals, so I think it seems from my perspective, I've been here about a year, that it's been difficult, that there's been this line that we want to accomplish it, but we never seem to cross over that line because we've been stuck with the utilities and how to pay for it. So that's where I tried to go the extra step to figure out how we're going to have it. We do have potential development here, we have the potential to compete there, as you saw in the market analysis, the highest of best use is a truck stop, gas station and a restaurant. But we got to have the utilities there. Why do we have to do utilities there? Because we're competing against vacant parcels in the region that already have utilities. So that being said, what we did is we pulled out all this old paperwork when we tried to get a cost estimate on the water and sewer before. Now, some of it was from the 90s, some of it was five years old. So we kind of took that and we updated it. You saw in the financial analysis that S.B. Friedman did, that we needed to update that, we did get it updated. Those numbers are in my memo. We also had IMA, BHMG look at the electric side and that's where we got that number from, that was just about six weeks ago. So the total cost are looking right around $2 million. That's water, sewer and electric. Now, when you look at the financial analysis that S.B. Friedman did between sales tax revenue, business district tax revenue, TIF, you're looking at, if you just do a gas station, about $100,000 a year. If you do the highest of best use, 1.2 million a year. So I said, okay, so we need about $2 million, 2.2 million. What is that going to look like? Well, typical infrastructure, you bond out for about 20, the length of the infrastructure. Now, a lot of people will say water sewer pipes are good for 40 years. I don't know that I would do that. So I estimated 25 years. You could do a bond for 25, that's in my memo, for 25 years, the payback would be about. memo, for 25 years, the payback would be about $130,000, $25,000 a year, because right now, the interest rates are low. And I thought, okay, but what happens if we do it, and it doesn't help? We're going to be stuck making that bond pay up for a couple of years. Can, can we do that? Will we survive? And the answer is yes. I evaluated the water sewer. If you do half and half on a water sewer to begin with, that's about $65,000 out of each fund, that's well within our parameters to do. And then, over time, if you did an alt-reb bond, I talked to our bond consultants who did our refund, remember last year?
Yeah.
And he had suggested, because I thought, what I'd like to do is do an alt-reb with water sewer to begin with, because that's all we have, but then I'd like TIF and business district, you know, to pay it moving forward, and how do I switch that? And he said, well, you could absolutely issue an alt-reb bond with all three, and then initially pay it out of water sewer, and then once it's developed, and you're getting that with other monies, those monies will kick in, and you can start paying it out of that. So, there's plenty of potential to pay off, $2 million over 25 years, you could even think of less, if you want to do 30 years. I don't know that I'd go much beyond 30 years, but that's up to you. I've seen it up to 40 for infrastructure. So, my recommendation would be, if this is something that you are totally serious about doing, I'm looking for your input of, I think you could pay for the electric out of pocket, and I think you bond for $2 million or $175, whatever it truly ends up being, and do it, cross that line, get it done. I have a very good potential for development to that property, once the utilities are available. And if it falls apart, we are competing. And the next step with S.B. Friedman is, they go out and help us find a development. That's, you know, it was a three-phase with them. So, they've done the market analysis, they've done the financial analysis, the next is to help us find somebody to develop there. But, we have to get the utilities first. So, I found a way to pay for it, it's whether what your appetite is to take the risk, because it is a risk, I will tell you it's a risk, you know, spending $2 million, and then they can sit there vacant for five years. But, the only way to compete or do anything with this jewel that you have, of this interstate interchange, is to get the utilities out there. I think that's what you want. I think that's what the community wants, but there's a risk, there's a cost. But, I think we can make that happen. Joe and I talked this afternoon, he had another good idea, is to look into the USDA, has very low interest rates at loans. I did a cursory look this afternoon before the meeting. It didn't look like what we were looking to do was qualified, but that's just based on what's on their website. I'm actually, I'll call them this week, so, to see, you know, if there's a way to make that happen, because 2% would be less, bonds are around three and a half, four, depending. We've got good credit, that's, we found that out when we did refunding last year, so I think we would get a good rate. I think it's, you know, how long do you want to borrow from, and, you know, do you have the appetite to get it done? So, that's what this is, that's what the discussion is for. The TIF is part of that analysis they did. It would generate plenty of money. Again, all the revenues, minimum 1.2 billion, if you did the highest of best use there. So, let's say, you did get 1.2. This is pie in the sky, of course, but 200, probably less than 200, is going to pay the debt, and you're, you're collecting $1 million a year. Yes, is it going to hurt your existing businesses? Yeah, it will. Anytime we develop, you're going to have a settling of loss here, gain here. I think there's a combination of things, you're still going to have a lot of people coming into town, you've got the raceway, you've got the mixed track, you have baseball, you've got people going to Clinton Lake, they're still going to use Casey's and Huck's. What you're going to capture, if you read in the report at 74, are the people that don't come into town. All those thousands of cars and trucks that pass us by all the time, they're going to capture a piece of that.
You know, I think the truck traffic would be more likely to stop here than it would be in some of those, because if it's easy to get off and everything, it's not so easy to get to, and a better facility than, or a ham or anything, if the truck stop, if they use a fuel pump, it's, you know, they take a sudden, I mean, just knowing, and I know one in Oakwood, I know it's pretty healthy, it is not exciting, we have a pretty good site, we have a new truck stop.
There is concern about, you know, competing with, the highest of best use would be like Love's and LeRoy, you know, they're so close together. But, that's why I say, it is a risk. But, the interstate is where it's at. So, even if you don't get a truck stop, you might get something else. I don't know, you know, you saw, I don't know if you read the analysis of what's out there in the region or interstate, but you can't do anything until you have the utilities there.
They're pulled, go ahead. They're pulled over, and I mean, trucks just run down those, they're just, you know, come, pulled over every night in the rest area, and out here, the Huck's and everything, so there's a lot of...
There's a lot of trucks that get off on the ramps, instead of the ramp.
I'm not supposed to do that.
Well, I understand, but they do it anyhow. Every investment we've had, look at this, has been, has been killed by utilities. So, I mean, it's a risk that we're going, that we really need to take, in my opinion.
We've had previous interest by hotels.
We go to the service.
Fuel service, truck stop, full-service truck stop, car wash, and food vendors, so...
There's our one last, that Larry was working on, and they went somewhere else, they went somewhere else because, they went somewhere else because the utilities were available.
I don't know if they still have any interest or not, you know, they've got good projects that they're working on at the moment, so, you know, maybe it'd be on the back burner for a later date, but it'd be nice to have something new going out there.
There's been a lot of things done out there in the past, where you first did just two.
I don't think I'd recommend a 30-year bond, but I'd be, I'd be agreeable to the 20, 25.
Well, I was excited to think you could break this all down, because I really like how you laid it all out, and, you know, you gave us a ton of information, so I appreciate all your work on this.
Yeah. That's always been the problem, is how it's going to be paid for, how is everybody going to come back and tell us things?
It's not, there's never been like a plan, a good plan. It's always like, oh, we'll do this, and, you know, we need to do this, but there's like no real direction on what we're doing. So, this is like the, and I come to a lot of meetings before I was on this council, and I never heard anything like this. So, I appreciate the work you've done, and this has taken work on your part to do all this, so I appreciate what you've done.
Well, you're welcome, and I would, I'd love to see it happen.
Yeah.
I think this is one of your best opportunities, being on the interstate. There's so many communities that would love to be on the interstate.
Well, you know, you're talking about jobs. You know, you bring a hotel out, so it takes quite a few people to take care of the big hotel. Same thing with truck stop, food vendors, it's just more jobs to the area, and more tax dollars to the area, and development to the area. You know, and then, obviously, Mr. Schwartz has got the property to the north, if they ever needed to expand, I'm sure he would be willing to help.
Well, I can start trying to put a plan together, you know, for second, third steps, and start looking at it. Did you have anything to add?
No. Like, anything else?
No.
It'd be nice to step forward online, if that happens.
Yes.
That's all I have, because I'm going to share any other questions.
I do not, we don't have a section four executive session, we don't need that. Section five would be the city manager's report.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Move to your...
One second.
Colleen?
Testory?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.